Okay, it's six thirty. I'm going to open up the meeting for December thirteenth for the town's select board meeting. And we'll go from there. Everyone has their phones on. Please silence them. Turn them off. And if anyone's recording this, please let us know. We could stand.
West Virginia State Department, United States of America, the two, the Republic, which stands one nation under God.
Yes, my name is Bert Collins. I'm on the select board. I have Ray Platoon, and he's also on the select board. Ray is absent.
Jamie Kaplan is, Jamie, if you are here, Jamie Kaplan is our consultant, and she's going to speak to us tonight about our hazard mitigation plan. Hinsdale has done a hazard mitigation plan in 2019. I was here for that. Other people in the room may have been involved. I know Susan was. I don't know who else. But we have to update it every five years, okay? And it's a state requirement. We've got to have it. So we have a grant from the state to work with Jamie and her associates. And Jamie is someone with loads of experience in this field. And she's also doing, how many of these are you doing right now at the same time, Jamie?
Oh, I don't know. Almost a dozen.
Almost a dozen different towns. So she's well versed in the, in the issues. So Jamie, I'm going to just let you introduce yourself if you'd like and start.
Great. All right. Well, thank you all so much for having me. As Bob mentioned, my name's Jamie Kaplan. And what we're going to do today is hopefully I'll teach you something about what hazard mitigation is and what our planning process is to develop that plan and get some feedback from you all. I developed this, I'm in North Hampton, by the way. And I developed the presentation so that if we had a bunch of people online, they could participate as well. So we've got one person who's online. If you, as the online person, Jim, if you wanted to sign into this website, mentee.com and put that code in. And any of you in the room, if you've got a cell phone and you want to do this, you just open up a browser on your cell phone or iPad or laptop, whatever you have. And if you want to put in that code at that website, mentee.com, you don't download anything. It will give you the opportunity to sort of participate in the meeting virtually. But because most of you, we have one more person now who joined, but most of you are in the room. So you'll be able to just kind of call out information and I probably won't hear everything you say. So Bob, if you can help kind of.
Yeah.
Gather.
It's also being recorded, Jamie. So we'll get a, we'll get a, we'll get the whole thing on tape and we'll also get a text document of the transcript.
Right. Okay. So what I wanted to do, just to kind of kick it off, is to get a better sense of your community and what you value. So I just wanted to ask what you like most about Hinsdale. Let me see if I put that, oops, I didn't put the question in there.
Everybody can shout it out. Feel free to just say anything if you'd like to participate in her question.
Anybody have thoughts? If you don't, it's okay, but it's a beautiful rural community. I think. Any thoughts? All right. Well, we'll just keep going and.
Yeah, stage fright.
Yeah, I guess so. Well, hopefully you'll, you'll relax into it. So what we're going to do is I'll give you a little more information about me and my team and what we're doing. Explain hazard mitigation to you and what the hazard mitigation plan is. We'll work together to identify some natural hazards and identify critical facilities as well. And then we'll do a little brainstorming for possible mitigation actions. So as Bob mentioned, we've been, this is a graphic of some of the work that we've done in the state. This represents our team, or most of our team. We've all been in business for well over twenty years. We had a contract with the State of Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency to update fourteen plans on behalf of the state. They extended the contract with six more communities, yours being one of them, and their intent is to then give us eleven more after this. So this map represents some of that work and some work we've done outside of that specific contract. But we do work nationwide. Hazard mitigation planning is the majority of our focus, although not all of it. And I like to think that we're really good at what we do. And what that translates is to, we know how to ask some really good questions so that we can develop a good plan on your behalf. But all of you will have a lot of answers that we need, and that's part of why we do public engagement or public meetings. So hazard mitigation is defined by FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, as any action you take to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to life and property. And we're looking to understand what we can do to minimize risk, and that's what mitigation actions are. That's what we want your plan to be about. And our focus will only be on natural hazards, not man-made hazards. So I don't know if you just got a snow warning, but I just got an alert on my phone that we're going to have snow. So if we have lots and lots of snow, that would be a natural hazard. And it's been proven that for every dollar you spend mitigating risk or lessening your impact to those natural hazards, you're saving at least six dollars on future disaster losses. So for instance, if we were to have a big severe winter storm today and it had high winds and power lines come down and roads get blocked, cleaning up from that is expensive. It also translates into big economic damage, right? We can't get to work, schools get closed, et cetera. But if you clear your, the trees from the power lines, cut them back, that's significantly less expensive than a way to mitigate that risk. So that's the kind of thing we're looking at. And the contents of our plan will include these pieces. The community profile, I like to think that that sort of sets the stage for what is your community. What, who lives there? What's the demographic makeup? What's the built environment like? What are things that you care about? And then we start looking about at hazards, natural hazards, and we do a full risk analysis. We, we sort of ask this question of if these hazards were to happen, what will the impact to that community be? And then we also look at your capability to mitigate risk before, during, and after a disaster. So for instance, you're a small community. What's your capacity? Do you have a fire department, a police department? Do you have shelters, et cetera? And by understanding what you do have in terms of capacity, we'll also identify some challenges which could in turn become actions, things that you'd want to do to remedy those problems. Find me. And then your mitigation strategy is the portion of the plan that answers that, what are you going to do about it? Question and list these projects that you hope to be able to implement so that you do decrease your level of risk. And we wrap up the plan with an implementation and maintenance chapter so that, you know, you do something with the plan is very important. So there are many benefits to hazard mitigation planning. The plan we develop will identify what, what we consider to be cost-effective actions to reduce risk. So I like to think we're not coming up with harebrained ideas. These are flushed out, proven activities that you could do, and they'll focus your resources on your greatest vulnerabilities. We also work to help you build partnerships, and Bob could let you know that we've been already trying to talk to people across government boundaries. Because certainly these natural hazards we talk about cross those boundaries. And we also want to think about when you're mitigating risk, these projects that you're doing can collaborate with partners across government boundaries, and, and that's a good way to mitigate risk. The plan will increase awareness of hazards and of risk. I think reading the plan would increase your hazards, participating in this meeting will, and obviously implementing the plan will as well. Then the plan should communicate the town's priorities. This is not a cookie cutter document. It's not something that will communicate my priorities or my team's priorities, but really what the town cares about and what you want to do. And I know even though you're a little bit shy of participating, that's why I asked you in the beginning. Well, what do you like about your community? What's the culture there? What, what do you care about? Because we want to make sure that gets communicated in the plan. And we want the plan to align with your objectives. So we seek out as many plans that you already have in place to make sure we're consistent with those. And ultimately, having this plan can save lives as well as dollars. So putting together this plan started back in September, and we will wrap up with a draft plan in April. And when we have the draft plan, it goes to the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for their review. After MEMA reviews the plan, if they've got any questions or things that they'd like to see different, they let us know. And then when they're comfortable with it, they send the plan to FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, for their review and their approval. Once FEMA approves your plan, they think it's met all federal requirements. They will send the select board, well, Bob probably, a letter that says your plan is approved pending adoption. It's at that time that the select board needs to adopt the plan. So all of that process from when we give the plan to MEMA for their initial review until the select board adopts the plan will take several months. It, it could take almost as long as it takes for us to write the plan. But we will, as a consulting team, stick with you through that process, and I'll walk you through the process. And mostly all that you have to do is just stay patient. When you're looking at this timeline, the thing to pay attention to is that top line represents community engagement in the planning process. And you can see that through every single month, we are working with all of you, no matter what we're doing, kind of behind the scenes, putting your plan together. So here we are in December, having a public meeting. We'll have another public meeting in February. And then a opportunity for you to review the draft plan in March. When we're not having public meetings, we're meeting with what we call the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee, and I'll explain that in just a second. All right. Let me give you one more thing to be aware of that all state and local governments and tribal governments need to have approved by FEMA hazard mitigation plans to be eligible for what's called pre-disaster mitigation funding. So if, if you want to like do something today, for instance, I don't know, replace a culvert along a roadway because that culvert's too small and it's been flooding out, something like that, you could seek funding for that if you have, through FEMA, if you have an approved plan. If you don't, you're not eligible for that funding. They're still going to respond if you have a large enough disaster. The, the two, response as well as mitigation, they're different in their eyes. Anyway, that's the big incentive, as Bob was mentioning in the beginning, for communities to have a plan is the plans are good for five years, and it, and it opens you up to the ability to apply for this funding. All right. So when we develop a hazard mitigation plan, this for you is an update. So we look back to your previous plan from 2019. And in that plan, just like in ours, it lists a number of actions. We call them mitigation actions, these projects that you want to do. And we look to see what has been done and things that haven't been done. Are they still relevant? Do you want to move them forward into this new plan, or should we just get rid of them and come up with new ones? Excuse me. So that's one of the first steps. We're also, we look to your Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, which is very recent from 2022. So I'm sure some of you are aware of that plan. And that plan includes recommendations for ways that you could, in some ways, mitigate risk or become more climate resilient. So we look at that as well. And then we look to the state plan. The state recently released their five-year update. And it is a FEMA requirement that your local plan be consistent with the state-level plan. And then we also, as I mentioned to you before, we look to see what other plans you have in place, as well as what ordinances or bylaws you may have. Because we want to make sure that if you've named something, for instance, in your master plan or an open space and recreation plan that you want to do, we want to be aware of that so that it can be reflected in this mitigation plan update. All right. And then we also put together, as I told you, this Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee. And the responsibility of the committee is to do these four things. Provide us with supporting data and information. And as I told you in the beginning, we ask a lot of questions and look for a lot of information, and Bob can attest to that. We've asked him to do all kinds of things. And we need that information to make sure that your plan really reflects who you are and what you're interested in. Then we ask the committee to conduct some outreach and stakeholder engagement. So that's things like putting out the announcement for tonight's meeting and identifying who should come to this meeting or who should be, be on the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee. We ask committee members to identify and prioritize a list of mitigation actions or assist us with that. And finally, to review and comment on the draft plan. So you're aware, we don't send the plan to anybody outside of the town without approval from the committee. So, you know, when Bob says, yep, the plan can go to the state, we're ready, then we send it to the state. But we consider it to be your plan. So this is a list of the people who are on the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee at the moment. And as you can see, we've reached to sort of all the different pieces of your community, not just emergency management, but also thinking about sort of land use, and the public has been included. We've got that lake management committee here and some residents. So we're, we're trying to pull all these different pieces and make sure it's represented. And the committee can grow and change through our planning process. All right. So I wanted to get a sense from you all, what natural hazards you think we should be looking for. And this is part of how we start writing your plan, is thinking about what should, what should we do in terms of natural hazards? Which ones do you want to look at? Are you feeling any less shy? Anybody have any idea?
Snow and ice.
Snow and ice. I agree. Don't you remember that ice storm years ago? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, I just floods trees.
Great minds.
Don't think I like.
Trees. What else you got?
Someone said dam.
Floods, bad dams.
Damn damage.
Dams and floods. Any, any other ideas? All right. I think ice storms are personally my biggest fear. All right. So this is the list that we're going to look at for your plan. It includes everything that you mentioned. In terms of dams, we look at that with flooding. The only thing that is not included that you mentioned would be trees. We look at trees in terms of invasive species can kill off trees. And we look at trees in terms of high temperatures. We can really benefit by having a tree canopy. But I think what you're thinking about is trees fall down and cause power outages and block roadways and all of those things. And so that would be kind of an impact of several of these hazards, right? So the hazard would be the severe weather, the high winds, the snow and ice that brings the trees down. Trees in and of themselves, not necessarily a hazard. So you could see we've got a pretty, pretty thorough list. It's our responsibility and a federal requirement that we include as many hazards as are possible. We look to the state plan. We have to consider all hazards included in the state plan. And if we don't include any, then we need to make sure your plan would explain why not. All right. So when we have these hazards, what we do for every single one of them is describe them. And the initial definition is really basic, you know, what is an earthquake or what is a flood? Then we talk about, well, where is it going to occur in your community? Some of those hazards we would consider atmospheric, right? Things like the high winds or extreme temperatures, they're going to happen no matter where you are. Whereas some of those hazards like a dam breach or a flood, it's going to be to specific areas in your community. And we also look backwards, what has happened historically? And we try and focus not just as far back as we can go, but because this is a plan update, is what's changed in the last five to 10 years. And then we consider the extent or the range of what's possible. And then we look forward to the probability of future events. I think we could probably all agree, there's a hundred percent chance that we're going to have bad weather this winter, right? We could probably bet on it. But we don't know, will you have an earthquake? Or would there be a dam breach or something like that? So we try and weigh that. And then we look at a vulnerability assessment and try and understand what areas of your community are vulnerable and what those impacts will be. And then we also look at climate change, and we don't consider climate change to be a hazard in and of itself. We look at how it impacts the natural hazards. That's the approach. And Massachusetts released just at the end of 2022, a climate change assessment that divided the state into these multiple different regions and looked to identify the unique impacts of climate change in each region of the state. So for here, obviously, you guys are in the green. It would be tourist attractions and recreational amenities and an increase in vector-borne diseases and bacterial infections. So we try and get a good understanding of, of climate change and the natural hazards. For instance, we're going to see more high heat days. We see bigger changes in temperature. The fluctuation is happening faster, which I'm sure you noticed, as do I, is terrible to our roads, that kind of thing. And then the next step we want to do is understand what's most critical to your community. And the term critical facilities is used to describe any kind of structure or building that is necessary for you to respond as well as to recover in an emergency situation. And that definition can be applied to each individual community any way you want, right? So it's different for every community. It may include these things that I listed on the slide, your, a fire station, a police station. It could list a hospital or a long-term care facility. It can list, you could include schools, utilities, and other infrastructure or communication facilities. So really depends on the community. So what we need to do is understand, well, what would be critical to your community? So again, now that you're loosening up, what is critical to you before, during, or after a disaster? What do you think we should really pay attention to? Well, how about where you're sitting right now? Where are you?
Town hall.
And the police station.
Critical, right?
Yep.
What else?
Fire station, obviously.
Fire station, yeah.
Ambulance service.
Ambulance, I like that. Good idea.
Public Works Department.
Public Works, perfect. Is there infrastructure that, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Sewer pumps.
Sewer pumps, good.
Water.
I don't think she heard.
Did you say water?
Yeah, she did.
Perfect, got it.
Wouldn't you want the school to, for like shelter?
Absolutely.
Do we have a designated command center?
Then it's been where it is, where the disaster is.
So wherever that is, depending on the location of the disaster.
Correct.
Yeah, like your emergency management center, emergency operations center. Okay, so we put together a list with the Hazard Mitigation Committee. And this is what we have on the list at the moment. It can change. So most of what you mentioned is there. You didn't mention the library, but that is included. We include the library frequently because communities tend to use their libraries. For instance, if, if you lose power at your house, it may still be on at the library. And it, it would be a place you could get warmer or cooler or charge your phone or something like that. And then we also map the facilities that we identify as critical. And this is just an example of some of the maps and what they'll look like. And then we try to, with the, with the risk assessment and the analysis that we do, we combine the hazards that you identified and all of your community assets, not just your critical facilities, but we really look to your entire built environment. We look at the natural environment and the population, and where those two meet is what we would consider to be risk. And when we do that, we end up with maps and some data and information that is similar to this. And again, this is kind of a draft of what we're doing, but this is looking at flood risk. We've got, on this map, all of your built environment is included, which is part of why it's so crowded. But we can see here, when we're thinking about floods, there are forty-three single-family homes that are in flood plain. The town hall where you are is, we've got railroad tracks that could become impacted, and of course, Route Eight. And then we can also begin to assess the economic damage or impact, if you will, to that risk. So when we have a, our next public meeting, I'll be able to show you more maps of all of your, or most of your hazards and, and some final data and analysis from this. So once we begin understanding what can be impacted, we want to know what really becomes a problem, what's, what's going to happen to the buildings, to the infrastructure, to the people, to your systems of functioning. For instance, if we start having too many snow days, that's, that's a problem for parents, right? I'm a mother, like, that's not okay. If you end up with trees down or you have to cancel events. So we begin to try and understand what's, what's the impact of these hazards, not just in a map-based way, but like to your whole community. And I was going to ask you what you think the problems are. Are you up for that? No? That's totally honest. You don't have to be. I'll keep going. That was my sense. So when we figure out what the problems are, and each of your natural hazards in the plan will include a list of what we call. and each of your natural hazards in the plan will include a list of what we call problem statements, what we think the biggest impacts or problems could be. Then we want to figure out what you're going to, what you could possibly do about it, and that's what the mitigation actions are. So just as a reminder to you, those mitigation actions are going to be projects or other plans or activities that you could do to reduce those future vulnerabilities. And we get those list of mitigation actions from your previous plan, from your MVP plan, from your engagement in meetings like this, from the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee, and then from the risk and vulnerability assessments that we do. So lots of information comes together to create that list. And when we begin to create that list of mitigation actions or we're looking for solutions for your problems, those solutions all fall into one of these four categories. So local plans and regulations, this could include land use plans, building codes. It talks about how you're going to use your environment. Then we're looking at structure and infrastructure projects. Those are usually fairly big budget and easy to come up with. We think about natural systems protection. If you're shoring up your earth and dams, for instance, so they don't overtop or the edges of a lake or streams or something. That's a way to keep the water where it should be. And then we come up with education and awareness programs as well. So I show this to you just for sort of food for thought, that there are many ways to mitigate risk. And if you're up for it, a little brainstorming, how would you like the town to begin mitigating risk? What do you think are some good ideas? And, and I, I want to hear these. This, this is important.
Have the governor free up some money.
All right. I'll call her.
All righty.
What else you got?
Just the money.
Just the money? I'm sorry, someone said something about power lines.
Cut back trees from power lines.
Cut back trees, good. What else? There are no bad ideas.
Seek grant funding to improve some of the things and have a priority list of projects.
Okay. Well, this plan will definitely have a priority list. Good. Anybody want to add anything else?
Wildlife, wildlife management, refuge areas. There's no management to them.
Okay.
The state needs to do something about that seriously.
That brings me to another point, Jamie. And it would be the different departments in the state that own land or are responsible for the land in our town should be taking responsibility for the hazards that are in their sight that impact others. And the only example I'll use right now is the Hinsdale Flats towards the Washington side, brooks and things running down that way. Washington has had some serious flooding, which can happen again in the next storm. And I know they got some quick help this time. I just heard about it today, which is great for the seven houses that were, you know, experiencing flooding on their first floors. So, so they need to do it, and they need to step up in a big way. DCF in, in particular, I think, needs to take more responsibility for some of the properties and things under their control.
Yeah, that sounds good. Great. Maybe we can invite somebody from DCF to come to our next Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee meeting. What, anybody else with any other ideas? All right. Well, that's at about the spot we are in developing your plan as we're working on this list. Our next meeting, as I said in the beginning, will be in March. We will let you know about that. At that meeting, I'll be able to show you some more detail from the risk assessment as well as some more information about the mitigation actions that we've developed and the priority list. So we will rank and prioritize the mitigation actions. And then you will have an opportunity after the public meeting, the following month, to review the draft plan. And I'll make sure to let you know in the next public meeting how to look through that plan so it doesn't feel too overwhelming and you can look at what you care about most.
Jamie, one other suggestion that I'd have is, can we get big printouts of some of those maps? Because when you're looking at the map on a small sheet, if we're sending a document or things for people to look at, it's hard sometimes to see how serious some of the impact areas are.
Oh, absolutely.
Then we could at least have them here for people to come take a look at.
Yes, definitely, we can do that. And I'll see if we can get some of those to sooner than later.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, of course. All right. So then I, I wanted to show you this one other slide, which has nothing to do with the plan that we're writing. This is a graphic I took off the website, ready.gov. If you have never looked at it, I encourage you to. And it's worth thinking about how you can be prepared. I know we talked a lot about what we want the town to do, what we want the state to do. We need money, we need this, we need that. But we also have some individual responsibility to do what we can. So if you've never looked at that website, I encourage you to do it. And just things that you can do on your own, it's, it's worthwhile. All right. And before we wrap up and you're done with me, I just wanted to answer any questions if you have any. You did a good job warming up.
Jamie, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you so much. I'll make sure that Bob has a